...for the city and surrounded areas and be with the ones that's in the nursing homes and hospitals and just look over them as this COVID is still going around. These things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the November sixteenth, uh, Wendell City Council meeting. Our item on the agenda is approved council meeting for November second, twenty twenty one. I need to ask if anybody has any questions coming through meetings written for an urgent motion for approval. I have most of ten, I'll give the second. All in favor? The next item on the agenda is review, review of order number nine seventy-seven draft amendment two, orders nine forty-seven about fireworks sales. Tell us if you've got, got that recorded. Is everybody, uh, everybody familiar with what changes have been made in that, in that ordinance? You do need to remind, probably don't have a high light to go to changes made to you.
No, I didn't redline it because actually, Mayor, because of what we were changing it to, I'm, it's a, it would have been almost impossible to redline it because it's completely reworked from what the previous ordinance was.
You have a second minute to read over that, okay? Mine changes list up. Seasonal, I guess, season will be the right word to be in an annual, been allowed to sell, been allowed to sell fireworks annually, I mean, all year round, uh, stuff, but just for three, four times a year, based on permanent structure. I don't have, anybody that sell fireworks, uh, throughout the year, not just on designated days, I think that we've got listed in here, a weekend, a week or dates or whatever, city, city, uh, yearly license from the city.
Mayor, I could, I could get some of the
If you will get the high places.
High, high spots. We start off with a definition of fireworks and the fireworks definition that we're adopting is basically the definition from the code, like with state codes, uh, and we're talking about Class C fireworks, which is an extremely classy fireworks. Sales, sales are restricted, you can't sell fireworks at all in the city unless you've got a permit, uh, and to get a permit from the city, you gotta have a permit from State Fire Marshal first of all. Uh, and then, once you get the permit from the State Fire Marshal, you can request a permit from the city to sell fireworks. We've got two type of permits in here, we've got a, a permanent structure permit that allows you to sell year round, anytime you want to, it's a retail sale permit, uh, but that's got to be a permanent structure and, uh, there's some designations about what the, uh, permanent structure must be and how, and the size it must be and its location. You got to have certificate of insurance, uh, I've got two million dollars in product liability and million dollar insurance and general liability, uh, but in order to sell year round, it must be conducted out of a permanent structure built in compliance with standard building code, the standard fire prevention code is adopted by state of Alabama and North City of Winfield. Uh, the year round sale of fireworks from a tent, trailer or other temporary structures is expressly, expressly prohibited. You got to be approved in zoning ordinance where you're, where you're, where you're selling fireworks, it's got to be approved to be zoned properly, uh, and it's got to be hundred feet, you need to show us five hundred feet of an outdoor fire hydrant, within five hundred feet of an outdoor fire hydrant. Only D O P certified Class C can be sold. And then you will note on page four of seven at the top, first time it's, it's, it's in there, the sale of bottle rockets with an explosive cartridge under the size of two inches in length is expressly prohibited. Now, I don't know why that is. What I will tell you is every fireworks ordinance I've looked at, and I don't necessarily have a good explanation for that, but they limit the sale of bottle rockets if the cartridge is under the size of two inches in length. And I think it's because of, you know, those little B, those little B bundles of fire, of, of bottle rockets people used to get, get a little bundle of them, and you remember what we used to do with them? We'd get them and we'd dog them people or this, that or the other, you know, they weren't the big ones that you put, you actually set in a, in a, uh, container. We'd, we'd hold them and throw them or put them in a little gun and, you know, and point at somebody and shoot them. Those are just nuisance type things and, and all of these ordinances that I looked at and reviewed when I was putting this one together seem to want to limit that. Uh, and so I put it in there, but I've got it in bold and, and, and italic, and we can take that out if we want to, but, because I don't have any other good explanation for why that's limited other than that. Uh, I couldn't find a real good explanation for why these fireworks ordinances always limit that. But, you know, if it's a, if it's a larger bottle rocket, it, it, it goes higher and it may be because of the, the, those, or exploding such close proximity to, it may be why, they're, they're so close to you in proximity when they explode. I, I really don't know why, but I, I, I included that in there and put it in bold, we can take it out or we can leave it in, uh, whatever, but you'll see that bolded every time it's in there. Uh, then we've got a specific provision for the size of the sign, uh, you got to have a fireworks sign, no smoking, it must be no less than four inches high, and you got to have fire extinguisher, uh, certain type of fire extinguisher. Then we move on to the seasonal sales, and if you'll notice in, in paragraph one of the seasonal sales, which is on page four of seven, the seasonal sales, I have adopted the language from our previous fireworks ordinance. Uh, so seasonal sales will be allowed during the times that we normally allow fireworks, seasonal fireworks sale, that's where those, that's where those dates and times come from, all right, just out of our own ordinance. There's a separate permit required for seasonal sales of fireworks versus the permanent And then you go on to section twelve, which is restricted usage, and you can only, you can only discharge them with a certain period of time, uh, otherwise they're prohibited from being discharged, there's, uh, locations that you can't discharge, uh, sell to intoxicated or minor, minors is, to intoxicated person is, is prohibited, sell to minors prohibited. Uh, you can't explode them within a certain period of time and a certain location. And, uh, then if you want to do the public display, we've got a provision where you can do public displays, but you got to have a permit to do that. So, for example, like Pete does display fireworks, uh, or if you've got a, uh, we're doing some public displays up at the football field now with, uh, after ball games. You can still do those even though that, that, that's prohibited, all you got to do is give permission to do a public display, you got to request that and get permission as long as there's somebody responsible and then we can issue a permit for that public display. So, uh, and then it authorizes us to seize anything that's a violation of this ordinance and it provides penalties for the violations. So, uh, that's what I've got done, we really can't adopt it tonight, my suggestion is that we read through it, uh, y'all have any questions about it tonight? You want to ask me, I'll answer, we'll read through it and I suggest we give a copy of it to the chief and also give a copy of it to Alan, and that Alan, our fire chief, will get it and make any suggestions he'd like to make before we act on it the next day. And I used, uh, in here for the, for the permit fees, I used on, on the permit structure, I used the, uh, what seemed to be the, 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 the standard was, uh, you charge a dollar a square foot for the permit application, uh, and limited it to twelve, twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. So if you got over fifteen hundred square feet for the permit structure, that's the most, that's the maximum that your permit would be, your yearly permit for permanent structure. It wasn't based on, and I know that we sell business licenses based on, uh, income, don't we, or revenue, so we might want to change that, uh, as far as the, the permit and the license, we might want to change that. But there was things in here that I had to include that I, I was not real sure how, how we would feel about it and what we'd want to do, so I just took a shot at it and then we can, we can go back and make changes to it. But the fee for city fireworks permit should be one dollar per square foot from your structure and you can't trailer or other temporary structure and use to sell fireworks, for the minimum fee of fifteen hundred dollars, I mean, maximum, should be maximum fee of fifteen hundred dollars is the maximum you can charge. So, we can go back and change that, that's just what I put in there.
Yeah, then the council got any question for Todd on this? Uh, so, uh, Greg, nine forty-seven, your bid nine seventy-seven, they may have any question for us? That you have, and I don't know if you got, wait until the next council meeting to a doctor or something after, but.
You've got a copy of it, you've got a copy of it, get a copy of it to Brett.
I have. Any questions? Do a change for that now? Yeah, that's got the next council meeting. Uh, the next item on the agenda is traffic at Con Beverly Loop, uh, same block, we're discussing traffic every week about traffic control and speeding and different things in, in different areas in the city. Especially area where it's recently paved and lots of the road, traffic seems to pick up speed, uh, but, but this, on Beverly Loop here, and I've had the flanks, it's not been any fresh paving in there, and I've had flights on Beverly Loop several different times because of the location where it's at. Well, the caution light is up here where fourteen comes into two fifty-three, Beverly Loop goes around, coming in behind a nursing home, people don't wait at that intersection, fourteen from the scope traffic waters, so they're, they're running, they're running behind that, uh, nursing home, get back out to two fifty-three, oh, they're, they're coming down through the other way in the morning time, every time, uh, for whatever reason they don't want, they say the traffic, waiting on traffic to clear up. Lots on the scope traffic, if, if it's a line of cars, you'd have to go out on two fifty-three and scope traffic's letting out, when they cut through, when they beat the first line coming out of Beverly Loop on two fifty-three instead of fourteen. I don't know what the best, uh, fix is for that, but, I mean, it's already been, uh, several, I know, I know three different times that they've been called because they've lost a pet that they let out, you know, to do, take care of the business or whatever, their pets, not on the loop, but it's happened three different times in the three, over the course of the last nine years, uh, but I don't know a good fix for that. Two, three, I mean, it's, uh, two, three, I mean. Of course, there's none on the side of the nursing home, there are three of them left that have come from fourteen this way. I, I feel like at, at the least we need to put, uh, no through traffic signs on there, no, you know, absolutely no through traffic, I don't know that that, I feel like most times signs don't help any, uh, but I feel like that we need to, the points over the course of time that I've got on it, I think we need to try to take some kind of actions to stop it, the traffic, we usually have to cut through into two fifty-three or back over fourteen.
Can you make it into one way and just let the people that live on that road still going in and out the same way?
Well, I was gonna let, I was gonna ask Brett what his call was on it.
I just got approval to put, uh, those two cameras up there at that intersection, two fifty-three and fourteen, I could put one on the back if you'd like me to do this. I was, uh, a little more, a little better mark, because I, I got approval from a nursing home and they're, they're currently putting in another hose for them on their system with our cameras because of the patient comp DJ out there, we're asking them to put us in a, like, just a designated port for us, so there'll be, uh, one camera that goes back down fourteen, one at two fifty-three and went down, and I can, I can, you know, put one at the back and, and they're doing that.
Is that gonna help us, you think that will help us before it cut, for traffic to come through there?
I mean, I, I can see what's going on.
Before, in one way, I don't know, that's all I got, I don't know if that, which way you make it one way.
I could watch him cam for a while and see what's going on and. Well, soon enough, maybe all the traffic is active escape, turning in, going out there then, and then the mornings.
Can you do, uh, can you give us a count to that, camera gives a count? Can you put a camera where we have a count?
I can, I've got it over on Nickel Street right now, I had a complaint over there just as soon as I get it out, I've just had it over there for a couple of days.
On Nickel?
Yes, sir.
Dead ends or something?
On Nickel?
No.
No, sir, that's the one over behind, you go behind Jackson, goes out on the wayside route. That's a, I don't know why anybody would want to use the road because it's a bad place to come out onto the highway, but I've had a couple of the folks over there have said that they had to go pick up the traffic, so I put it over there Friday.
Well, I guess if you will, I mean, if that's what the council wants to do, let you do a study of what it's, what it's like, what's going on, uh, you know, revisit it or whatever, and, you know, it's kind of, I've kicked it around for quite a while of what we need to do for the traffic. I don't know what the best way is to get, you know, everybody's in a hurry.
Is it just over there, Mayor, is it just the, the mound of traffic, just dodging that, uh, fourteen to get through?
Yeah, but usually when somebody's trying to dodge an intersection, they usually pick the speed up to get to where it's going, it's just like, when somebody wants to dodge a train because blocking the track, I afraid it's pretty, pretty heavy speeds at that time when they're going around the train. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
I guess we can let him do the study on the train back revisit on city. Uh, next item on the agenda is Hooper Paul Animal Shelter, we've got some, uh, if I hear it wants to speak on behalf of what, uh, Hooper Paul Animal Shelter's seeking from the city. How you coming up?
Well, I don't know how good of a speaker I'll be, but, um, good afternoon, everybody. I am Felicia Acock and, uh, Kalen couldn't be here tonight and Karen is here also on behalf of Hooper Paul. I've got Kalen on the phone, so I'm not really sure, um, Kalen, can you hear?
I hear you a little bit.
Okay, let me turn you up a little bit. He just wanted, uh, Mayor Price just wanted us to speak a little bit on behalf of Hooper Paul, so is there something that, what do you want to say?
Um, I think he just kind of wants to know who we are and what we're doing, um, and I was kind of going to give a little information on, um, we, our intake from Winfield, it has been about forty, it's been about forty percent of what we have taken in, um, but now that does not include the calls that we have had to say no to because of limited space due to limited funding, um, we have the land to do it, we just don't have the funds to buy these four hundred dollar pens every, every time you turn around for one because we're, we're staying for it. Um, that's kind of what we were wanting to do is the city of Hamilton, um, would they have accepted with us to use us as an additional resource for the Hamilton, the Marion Winston Animal Shelter, um, so she's still doing all of her services that she's required by contract to do, um, we're just kind of a backup to fill in with those that she can't intake when she's at full capacity, which is honestly at most of the time, um, and so we're just working right now, we're solely donation based, we have again got the city of Hamilton on board, the city of Gwin was supposed to be voting tonight, um, at their meeting, I'm not sure what their decision is yet, but it was also proven to them because between Winfield, Hamilton and Gwin city limits, um, that makes up over ninety percent of the animals we have that are coming in. And, um, the cost to actually operate everything is around forty-six hundred dollars a month. So, obviously, um, what we're asking for is it's just a donation, it's not a, it's not a contract, um, say wholly key one to anything, it's just a monthly recurring donation that would be considered a tax deductible item for the city because we are a five oh one C three registered charity, um, so you can, did a, any of those donations made to us from your, um, anything that has to be reported on taxes. And the amount is really just kind of an average amount that helps cover the bedding cost and the feeding cost of the animals that we are seeing coming in from your area.
And we are, uh, for some, some of you that may or may not know, we are a no kill shelter, so that means if we take in an animal, we keep that animal live and, uh, Kalen puts them on the list, she's with, um, with some states up north as a lot of shelters are, and so if those animals get adopted out, that's fine, we'll just replace that animal with another animal, and if it doesn't get adopted out, then they are sent up north. We are in with, who is it, Kalen, Greater Birmingham?
Delaware, it's T C A.
Okay, Delaware is T C A. And so what we do is we, uh, like I said, we keep the animals on the list, so when they're called, we take them to Birmingham and they're flown up north to be, uh, adopted out up there. They have to have rabies shots, um, we're crossing the state line, is there any other requirements, Kalen?
So, um, it's, it's, it's the USDA, so what we do when we transport is we follow USDA guidelines even though we're not required to because we're not receiving money from transfers, um, what we do is intake that's under six months old, um, doesn't have to be spayed or bigger, it just has to have a rabies vaccination and then your parvo vaccination and disper, um, and with puppies, they have to have some more rounds of those, um, where they come in, they get, so we're wanting to hold them for at least two, they can't be transferred until they've had at least two rounds of the vaccination plus the rabies vaccination. So, those are definite costs that we have regardless of anything. And then for anything over six months old, in addition to those same vaccinations, they all, also have to be spayed or bigger and heartworm tested, um, because they will not let us transport, uh, in a large group, anything that's heartworm positive, we can still transport, they just usually go on a smaller, um, more individualized type transport, that's what we're doing with the Greater Birmingham Humane Society because currently, um, Greater Birmingham has a very large transport that they schedule once a month and they give us a certain number of allotted spots on their transport in order to get these dogs to Delaware. So, it's not something we're having to pay for on the transport, we just have to pay for the vaccines and then the spay or bigger for anything over six months old, and those are all things that we're, we have to pay for anyways regardless of whether they are in our state or county or for a while or.
I'd like this month, but it will be next month. Well, how good is that, we should have said how good that is for Christmas, that's good, but, uh, even telling what's gonna happen in the next three days, uh, but I'd like for the council to go ahead and make it, and both, as which bid they want, but I'd like for the council all to consider, uh, let me look and see if we could just pay for that truck instead of financing it right for eight, eight minutes.
I imagine the bank's in mind, he'll pay off three this week.
So, I guess in the last council, which bids, you've got three bids, every bid that council wants to, no ask for motion for the first, everyone's got an idea of which bid, which bank they want to, uh, let finance it, put financing. Yeah? Two point three nine, that's the motion for Gina to accept it, change in all the favor. I'd be happy. Appreciate it, appreciate it, all the banks giving us a bid on that. We like it with a local, that's a local bond in front of it. All right. Now, the next item on the agenda is open business. We're gonna start with a change, I guess, again.
Brett, on Winfield, this count that you gave me this time, is that, how did it stop time with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, forward.
Yes, sir. That was just the second, this, this second week.
Because I don't have any yet since it been put in.
The count was down about four hundred, but the top speed was up to sixty miles an hour and the forceful was up thirty-one, up to thirty-one percent, so the count was down, but the speed was up and more violations percentage wise because they're done, so when we get, we'll have a count after the stop sign.
If you want.
Yeah, because I know for a fact that I personally run that, one of the lights going on in the afternoon.
Okay.
I stopped for the second one, but I had personally run the first one twice that I'm aware of, it couldn't have been more than that.
Okay.
And I've gotten several texts of people telling me that they have seen other people run the stop sign.
So, you know.
I think we need to put a police car up there and catch the people that's on the stop sign.
And I, I was behind the one that ran the stop sign and went up a block and turned to the right, so I'm not the only one that's done it, but I did stop for that one when I followed another car. I'm waiting to see. So, there's gonna be a period of time for people, those signs are very visible at night because you have lights, they reflect really well, but in the, in the mornings and afternoon before it gets dark, if you're not accustomed to them, you're gonna run through.
Brett, I tell you, it's a whole lot easier for him to, it's a whole lot easier for them to patrol the stop sign.
Oh, surely the person's speed.
We usually, what we usually try to do.
We usually, what we usually try to do is give a two week adjustment. Even if there's a, if there's something comes up in the state, um, we try and give it two weeks and they get adjusted and we start.
I had a neighbor said that it was a week before they even knew they were there.
That's why you get in a, you get in a hand.
Neighbor.
I hope it's because if they were turning and going out the other way, coming in the rally and not going that way, I would assume that's why they didn't know that was happening. Because I would hope it wasn't the neighbor tier from the public here.
No, it was not. It was not.
That was pretty bad.
More of this business?
No.
You can check all the time you want.
Uh, the parade on side of Woodville still up and down the road?
From the pavement? They're not, they're not gonna come back, uh, I understand. So, you were gonna have it done? Well, Tim done part of it, I, I don't know if you realize that or notice that or any sign was, was, you didn't issue.
He said he needs a blank without that to do the rest of it.
You're saying that when you're stopped at them signs or?
No, that's what he's looking at, when you're on the stop sign.
I thought most of the spread is, uh, where we had to.
That color really takes some attention.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Obviously, yeah, we don't.
I'm gonna, we got, we're gonna get rock around here if that color. Doesn't mean that, but now if you don't miss. Get the crew, take, take the backhoe and dump truck and clean up those sides and then we can.
Some of it really needs some serious attention because of the chunks that pass by.
Get rock and stuff.
And I started this last week on the park and I said we've got an estimate from somebody for our eight.
I sent, uh, that's, I had Angie print those, hold on a minute for you, that's where you're going, pure way to go into that on their old business, that's fine. I mean, I printed that, I had, I had, I had a, an engineer go by there and look at that and do a cost, estimate of what it would cost. He said it'd be very simple to put that pump at the back and do that, uh, versus us coming out of the building and going around to the front and connecting that. Get Todd to copy that, let us do. I haven't looked that hard about putting that, uh, getting that server running behind the building, stuff through the building at the meat center. Got to itemize there what material it takes to do it.
Only the quarter we left off, we still bid, it'd be right at the back of the corner.
I'll, I'll say that. It could be, it, it probably wouldn't be, I didn't think to ask that, but it'd be toward it has. Quarter of this, I guess, I don't have anybody here with a word for me tonight, but I'm, I'm thinking that, that, cause we've got, uh, load bore on there. That's why I'm asking why, that's why I was wondering why we had the load bore put on there, unless that person's on the other side and anyone's on the hit.
Yeah, I think you. That pumping station we got in there to, to measure is extremely high.
No, this, this is, this is a estimate of probable construction company, they're gonna figure it high.
Yeah, well, it's about five thousand dollars.
They're gonna figure this is not, this is, this is, this is where you put out the bid, this is what, what people, you know, if, if anybody bids this project, they come in here and say, well, we didn't use about a hundred foot, four inch pipe, they go, they go to the draw. This is up to, this is what it could be up to.
I mean, we, we got it done, so we might as well send specs out for somebody to bid or don't, because maybe tomorrow, six, eight months.
Todd, if, if advises, I mean, I think that's the better way to go instead of, uh, going through the building, of course. I don't think we need to try to go through the building and catch it back out from it. I don't think that that is, is an option. And I think this is a better option instead of coming out and going around the building and then going to the front. My question to Todd is be it the, the extreme urgency of getting it fixed just about putting it out for bid or, or getting, um, getting free competitive bids, I guess, or, or ask them, the best way to do that.
I mean, if you don't bid it, who you gonna do it?
Huh?
Who you gonna do it to?
To bid?
I mean, if you don't bid it, who's gonna do it?
If I don't bid it, who will do it? I don't know the name, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking to agree if it's a good price, isn't it?
You don't go three, listen, yeah. So, what, you usually get a quote?
You can get a quote.
If you want from Fred, get, if you know Fred.
Sometimes put out what your own process.
What your own process, you get a couple, I mean, we, we gotta get it done, we, you know, we can't wait another six, eight months to go through all that, but at least, you know, we gotta set, we gotta set the thing that we want to do and we don't want everyone to give a surprise on doing this, uh, you know, what you want it done, but this is the way we want it done, so we want this done and you give a surprise on doing that and we have two or three prices that we can compare.
You can copy the, why don't you have everything over there?
I'll, I'll just prepare the bid on that, we, if that, I'll say, I'll get three, two or three people to give me a bid on it.
And while we're talking about the park, I asked Gina about the company that ran the tennis sports, they have the tennis sports and the, um, pickleball, I think that's what it's called, and the track, and she said they did come out and they looked at it and they are supposed to be getting her a quote together.
And pickleball is a bigger sport, you saw it?
Yes, I actually.
I still gotta look that up.
I have some similarity of like, go ball, pickleball.
Not real pick.
It's a thing, it is a thing.
It's like tennis, but on a smaller court.
Something I may need on it, be playing.
One of the morning shows last week.
Yeah, like never playing on.
Yeah, it was like one of the morning shows.
I don't know what to do. I had a fight with it when I was up in North Carolina, my previous job, I had to cover a tournament that they did at Park and Andrew, kind of people from all over the place.
They placed a four and one.
Got a counter over here. All right. James, go ahead.
I'm done.
I'm not, but I will, but. I may have kid Allen up here explaining all of this. It's about the, uh, exhaust system in the Bay Area at a fire department and then Hewitt put up and, uh, did y'all get, or it's a grant, ain't it?
Yeah, we walked and applied for an AFG grant, uh, system firefighter grant, some other you. We had a budgetary, uh, estimate on the system, eighty-seven, well, eighty-seven thousand dollars, that, that, there would be a five percent match and, uh, if we did, uh, get, um, you see, y'all could help us out maybe with that match, that match would be approximately four thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Oh, did you tell them that was forty, you said eighty?
Oh, the most, the estimate was eighty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-seven. When he come out and looked at, he did tell me that they issued high, they put that estimate for the actual application for the grant, it could come in under that, but shouldn't go over that. We should, if we apply for, uh, we don't know anything to over explain what they're saying. You got, you got a system in there, man, that's outdated, uh, uh, it's not up to standard anymore, considering what they do now. The system I'm talking about, you've probably seen them on TV before, it's basically the pipes that come out the ceiling and hook to the exhaust pipes on the truck. When you crank the truck leaving the station, it's, it's magnificent, it's popping off the truck. It catches everything a lot better and, uh, they're really upsizing cancer things, especially in the fire service right now. And, uh, we'll understand, one of this system's one of their high priorities with the AFG this year.
Is that, is that exhaust filtered any kind of way before it goes up the top or is it just, is it just get it out the top like?
It is filtered also.
It is filtered. They'll run a mission, they're running, total mission grant for that too, I don't know, that may be what they're using, but anytime they're filtering, it's all going green, you know, front of them. But I, I mean, I, I think they'll, if Allen and can apply for this grant, I'll give it up, I think, if I have, advise the council to let them do it, you know, do that match rule. Motion to let them apply, boy, all in favor?
Thank you.
Question? Hold on, oh, he's got, you know, Tim. Give me your list, Gina.
Um, I was just going to, we did hear back from, I told you Main Street had applied for a grant for the N Y A building, and we did hear back from it. Um, last year, the grant that we applied for that we got was on here, it's the fourteen nine forty-eight, is what we got last year, and this year we got fifteen five. So, um, we are planning on meeting in the next couple of weeks, Main Street is, to go forward with this and talk about, you know, what Main Street's gonna do and, and talk about with the N Y A or.
That's good. You got any, anything else?
No, I just forgot about this one, what did, uh, they come from Main Street or?
Not enough, they did, there's not, nothing changed.
And they, they have a big.
Yeah, I mean, I like them, they know. It's a way to win.
Yeah. Did we ever get anybody to look at this sign out here? Bailey, Bailey?
I don't know, we're, we're, and I'll give you two more quotes.
Go to the base.
Yeah, my church.
Yeah, that was on the, on the side.
Yeah, I thought Bush, I think he was trying, he was on the way there.
Then you might get a little wind.
Oh, I don't know if we did it or not.
They just put up.
Yeah, the sign.
Takes a lot of, part of the old sign.
White did, it looked good.
Leon.
Uh, if, if anybody else got nothing, uh, old business up here on Tahoe Road, we've been requested numerous times, but we took a speed breaker out because of the, kind of loose from the pavement or asphalt there, uh, just robbed and we took it out and we've been, we've had, we've had requests for it to be put back in. Uh, I, I've made numerous trips down through there, kind of keeping an eye and seeing how the speed limit posted up there is twenty mile an hour. That would be good, it, we, we, I don't think we have complaints if people run twenty mile an hour through there, but that road, it's hard for anybody to run twenty mile an hour through there without some, yeah, we discussed that before, you know, like in school stops and whatever, still it's hard for these vehicles, whether they're now, not like a, you know, Model As and T's, it's, they just don't hardly want to go in twenty. But, that being said, I think we're gonna need to address that issue and I'm not a fan of, of, uh, speed breakers myself, but I, I have made several trips back through over where we had added those two stops, two, four stop signs over there on Woodville. And I kind of think that that, that stop sign is, is a better way of controlling the speed of traffic than a speed breaker is. That, by me saying that, if everybody's familiar, right above where we had that speed breaker, there's a side road, it's a city street, it's two lane.
And it comes back out on?
It don't, definitely don't come out at dead ends, dead ends, it comes back, back out into Tahoe Road. It's two, two lane and I, and it's right above where we had the speed breaker. I mean, I, I kind of feel like that, I think that we might want to, I don't know, I think we might want to, you know, discuss the issue, maybe put two stop signs there, stop that, make the traffic stop, it's coming through there and then they'll pay, they'll pay back up and take off. That's just my thought.
Well, we got our report back on Woodville, we don't know whether or not there's three one stop sign there.
So, kind of table and look at that, look at that again, forward side of the speed breaker. I think, I think the police department would agree with me, I mean, I'm speaking for them, but I think Brett would agree with it, that the stop sign has a tendency to work better for slower traffic damage.
It does, it's a lot easier to.
We'll have, we'll have some kind of proof next week as to the fact of these signs. Because we should see our overall speed change.
You got it up right now, Brett?
Uh, I, I do, we get the street.
Okay, that's how you said it, I will.
But after, I mean, I'll run it six or seven days on Union Street and I'll move it back over there and I should have some luck.
I need to, uh, I need to ask, I need to probably ask them in the agenda or something that's come up, uh, this point in time, posting the agenda, Brett needs to address it, address something with us. So, I, all right, Brett has, has come to me, we've talked a little bit about it in the past and we've done it in the past, uh, about how hard it is, you know, to get employees and people that we, that won't be in Woodville to work and do different things and kind of keep their help, but Brett's, I'm gonna let him kind of speak behalf on a little bit of what this is about, uh, Brett, if you want to tell them what's on your mind about what we got going on.
I, I guess you all know, uh, this past year, they have put different stipulations on the academy and, uh, I used to, when I first come in as, as chief, I, I wanted to try to get seasoned officers, uh, but I have since changed my outlook on that. I'd rather get, uh, longer, uh, than that's, uh, relative. But I do the same with the academy, because we got them, uh, for a two-year term that we know straight out of the academy, plus we can train them. I, I don't like taking on somebody at the ground. I would rather train, uh, like we won't here, uh, I, I feel like we have a, a very good department, uh, we do things a little bit different than most. I have interviewed, uh, three candidates, uh, one has really stuck out to me, but when I called the academy today, uh, they, now you've got to have a BAT test, which is a basic equivalence test before you can start the academy, plus you have to have a psychologic thing, uh, before you can even get into the academy. All that has to be done, uh, five. All that has to be done five weeks prior. The first academy date is January the tenth, which would make my last day December the sixth, to have all of my paperwork, everything that I would need from a cadet, and psychological exam and a BAT test. I spoke with the mayor today, just briefly, and told him that I had one person that I really liked, that I spoke with, and he didn't even know that I was going to do this until I spoke with him at five o'clock. His name is Judd Tucker. I would like to ask the council to send him to the academy to get started on his paperwork. Well, I have to get started on paperwork tonight. To see if I can, well, there's not no seat. If you guys allow, we'll be in.
Isn't it, you said that we send him to the academy, we have him for sure for two years?
Yeah, there's a two-year agreement that's in the state code. We have the stipulation of either asking another department to pay that or waiting that if they choose to go somewhere else.
It's not involuntary, sir, but you, I mean, making ladies, but we got our money back.
Correct.
I love that. Saved me, because I was listening to, in my spiel, you know, like I always want to.
You know what you're getting yourself into?
I was thinking like this. Mr. Tucker, I'm trying to live like that thirty million top.
I appreciate you skipping. But, I mean, I, where'd you go to school with that?
Oh, you can go to...
Very sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to...
...export it outdoors because we don't want any reproducing in our facility either. We have certain stipulations on dogs that we can mix in in the same kennel. And dogs that we can't, and litters of puppies aren't to be mixed together unless they've been fully vaccinated for over two weeks because they don't receive their full immunity until two weeks after their final vaccination. So that's kind of how we're, what holds up some of our space is we have to keep that two-week period open from intermixing them together before we can open up a pen for somebody else to come in.
Anybody have a question?
What's your physical location of your?
It is County Highway Two, is that right, Kaylin?
Yes, it's three ninety, County Route Two. It's directly behind the S T Gun Plant there in Hops.
The percentages, the percentages of animals you're saying is getting from the ninety percent from Darian Hamilton and Winfield. Are y'all, are people bringing animals, bringing animals to you now? Or are y'all coming to, to pick up animals?
What about the animals, Kaylin? Mayor Price is asking, as far as the animals, like in the Winfield area, are they bringing those? Or are you picking those up?
Yes, they're having to be brought in. We are doing any pickups because that's what Charlotte is supposed to be doing. So anything that we get are people bringing them.
Okay.
And is it just dogs that you're accepting or you're taking any kind of?
We take any kind. Right now, we don't, we've got a few cats and kittens there. We've just had our shelter delivered probably about three weeks ago. And we're working on kind of getting a place to keep the cats and kittens. We take in horses. Just any, just anything, basically. Right, Kaylin, as far as horses, cats and dogs?
We do equine. Now, any of the, any of the horses or other equine or any of the farm animals are not kept on that property. I actually have a working farm that fosters those for us because they have a quarantine area to keep them away from other animals until they've been checked out. So any of those larger livestock or horses are being kept on site. It's just the dogs that, really, we weren't set up for cats, but we have some now because people decided to drop them off to us without showing. So that is actually the only reason we have any cats right now. But we did purchase a cat shelter that had been partially delivered. And the other portion of it is supposed to be used this week. And then it can be assembled hopefully over the weekend.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions for? For the veterinarian services, for y'all qualified or you use a particular veterinarian?
We are not qualified. We use Dr. Thrash, Jamie, over at Fulton Veterinary Clinic. We use her. As far as...
She is, she has just recently signed, actually this morning, our paperwork to be our listed attending veterinarian for the shelter itself with the USDA.
So even if, you know, the website that we have, if anybody wants a cat or dog spayed or neutered, they can go in on our website and click on it and put the information in and pay for it. And Kaylin will send them back a certificate through an email. And that can be used over Dr. Thrash's to have the animal spayed or neutered.
Good. Does Dr. Thrash come to y'all's facility for anything, for service wise, or does she take everything over there?
Right now, we're transporting the animals to her. By volunteers. Yes, by volunteers in our own vehicles.
Everything that we have, just at this point, is being done on our own personal. I actually work a forty-hour job. So when I do anything, I'm taking my vacation time away from my job. Everything, like I said, everything is volunteer. We use our personal vehicles to take these animals wherever they need to go. Most of the crates that we use for transport, I purchased with my personal money. There's been a lot of things that have gone into it that have been my personal money other than because donations just don't cover it.
So...
About how long, because I was trying to listen when she was talking about the aging puppies and stuff. About how long would you say a puppy stays there or a dog before it's shipped out?
Okay, Kaylin, the question was how long, about how long does a puppy or dog stay at our place before it's shipped out?
So currently, up until this past week, because we've done a little better control on our intake the past three months, most of what we had were staying from a minimum of two months. But now that we have, we have a few sitting open pens right now that are being cleaned out because they've had other animal maintenance. But because we have the pens, we're able to separate a little bit better in order to vaccinate and get everybody on a better vaccination schedule. So actually, these last ones that we sent to Delaware, which was just the past Sunday, we had only had for six weeks. Usually, the average stay is going to be about six weeks for puppies. But then for adults, it goes then to eight to twelve weeks. Because we have to transport, they prefer us to transport puppies over the adults. But they even know they will take them both. So usually, the way I try to do it is I just have a list, and I make my list of who's being transferred based off of who's been there the longest, versus their age, to try and make those longer residents out. And actually, it's on our website as well. There is an happy tales page under the adoptions that shows that the majority of our adoptions are out of the Delaware F D C A where we're sending them to. And usually, when they go there, they're adopted within two weeks.
So you go basically with a question, a donation from the city for monthly expenses?
Kaylin, what Mayor Price is asking, then we're more or less asking for a donation.
Yes.
Of the, you said it was about four thousand dollars a month?
Yes, ma'am.
What would you say is the bulk of that money for?
Okay.
Like is it for, like vet bills or?
Mostly that. Ms. Estes, Kaylin, has asked, out of the four thousand dollars expense a month, where is the biggest expense? And we said the vet.
Yes, the biggest expense is the veterinary expense because the majority of these that come in don't just have to have their vaccinations. They also have some sort of underlying, usually, skin condition from mange from not being treated with anything. The puppies tend to have to have two to three rounds of dewarber because they're so full of worms. It's just one of the treatments doesn't do any good for them. And also, for the adults, if they are heart work negative, which they're tested, the adults are tested at intake for heart work. As long as they're heart work negative, they also have to go on a heart work preventative. So there are your normal animal care expenses that you would have for your off pet that we're required to provide for these animals in order to get them a place on that transfer list if they are not adopted.
How many dogs do you have now?
How many do we have now, Kaylin? I think we sent our four, five Sunday?
Well, this morning, we have seven. But now this afternoon, we have seventeen.
I think we're dumping them all. Wow, is that because somebody has dropped some off this afternoon?
Yes, someone brought in two separate litters of puppies.
Okay.
And it kind of, it usually washes one another out because usually, as soon as we get an open pen from one being adopted or transferred, there's usually two more waiting to take its place.
How long has Houston Paul been in business?
We started in early spring, was it March or April, Kaylin, we started?
We started actually taking in and housing up there in May. But now I would bring them home with me in April.
Okay, I knew it was early spring.
May of this year?
Yes, sir.
And just based off the number of dogs that we have spayed or neutered, it comes out the statistical average is about seven puppies per litter. So there's over five hundred puppies that we have prevented from being wandering on the street just since April.
Y'all go pick up animals or people just bring them to you?
We have started having them to bring them to us. We were picking them up to begin with, but now we're having them to bring them to us.
But like Kaylin said, most of the time, they're dropped off.
Yeah.
And that's a problem we have because we've had some puppies dropped off and they have parvo. So if we don't know it, then our other dogs catch it right off. And then our pens are contaminated with parvo. And you can't put any dogs in there for a certain length of time until you spray it, clean it, and you're back to, you know, back to the same place as you were before.
Anybody in the council got any more questions for? What percentage of dogs have been adopted locally?
What percentage of dogs have been adopted locally, Kaylin?
Now, recently, I only have two that have been adopted recently, but they're out there locally. But as far as our adoptions, I would say that probably are right at fifty-fifty are being adopted versus transferred. Because the, one of our monthly expenses that we have is a management software that I use to track all of the information, like where they're, where they were found now or who brought them in and what date they came in. It's all of the information that USDA requires to be reported, which is one of our expenses. But it gives you free access to list your adoptable animals on Adopta Pet. So a lot of our adoptions have actually come from people in Mississippi or Tennessee that have been looking for a hundred to a hundred and fifty mile radius for a dog that they searched for on Adopta Pet, and they found one of ours.
On those dogs, how much is adoption fee?
On those dogs, Kaylin, how much is the adoption fee?
For adults, the adoption fee is a hundred dollars. And for puppies, it's a hundred and fifty. And then, if we were, on the occasion that we were to get any sort of one that has, that may have some sort of problem where it's not going to have a very long life, but it's healthy, you know, it's fine to go home. We do have certain instances where we will discount those just to move that dog out of our care, but also keep it healthy and get it into a good place. But the adoption fee is set to cover the normal expenses that we've had to pay for in order to keep that dog.
How many have you adopted in November?
We have had a total, this is dogs and cats. From our adoptions, there have been a total of forty-three adoptions versus around sixty, something of sixty-ish transferred. And we've had no returns.
Anybody else got any other questions? I appreciate you putting it on and explaining everything, what your operations doing, what you're doing, what they're...
Yes, sir.
What are you doing in your life and see if there's anything that you can do to help y'all's organization move forward?
Thank you very much for your time. Everybody had good questions. We appreciate it. Appreciate your interest in us. Thank you.
The next item on the June is Delta, I think that's the iron one, I guess.
I think just like we didn't leave it off.
I'll take that, we still have... We'll put that on the next agenda.
Toward the one I said, I'm working on this.
A little tricky.
It's a little complicated.
The next item on June is after that, is Alamo Power Foundation Gateway Grant. Have you got anybody?
Lights?
Light, Ken.
I'll brief this thing on the paper. Our company offers that grant up to twenty-five hundred, and we use it for signage of different times. And so I'll pass a picture around here on speaking. This is our sign out near the intersection. That's the current sign. It's cracked, it's been there possibly since City Hall was built. I don't know that for a fact.
Which signs is this?
This is one out near the intersection that says, "Like administration, police, judicial." So we've applied for a grant to power company. We've been awarded $1,000. The estimated cost of the sign is around 2,800 plus whatever the labor would be to install. And it would be, if the warranty on the sign, we would need to have it professionally installed. I don't know the cost of the labor at this point.
The sign that you got Espen on, did I develop what we already got?
Yeah, we asked the sign company that came with daddy's pictures and sent it off to their supplier. And so it would be as close to that, if not identical.
So we're looking at, we're looking at $1,800, $1,850 to go along with that $1,000 grant to buy a sign as close to what we got?
Yes, plus, plus whatever the labor might be.
Plus, what are the laborers? What would the, what would the laborers, what type of warranty would it be?
I guess to make sure if dropped it when they're putting it up or cracked it, really in something. Cracked it would be on them versus on, I want to say, with the city employees that was trying to help put it up.
It'd be on them anyway, what you look at.
So that's a two-sided sign, that's just one.
They're going to make it out of wood?
Is it made of?
Is that made out of wood?
It's a, it's a composite. The sign we have now, I don't know if that's a sign that's cracked, but it's cracked running for halfway, halfway through the sign. It's spayed or anything.
So you already applied, that grant you got. Tell them you got to use that money.
A year. A year. I don't know the installation cost yet.
That's what I said, give us the cost. I'd like to go out here and take a, real close look at the sign that we got out there now, since we're going good. It's going to be all that same material. What this one is.
I would think, unless there's been improvements in the last thirty years.
I don't know that that sign's been out there since City Hall. Well, let's be telling them this building was built.
This building, yes.
What year was that?
Eighty-eight. I think the main thing from a power company in Britain might could hit light, how long we have to accept or decline. I know there's a form that the mayor would need to sign to return, but I don't, I don't know that I've seen a...
There's not a definitive time on that.
So we wait the next council meeting, three weeks from tonight.
Yeah, to sign the grant agreement. And then we would get you the check shortly thereafter.
If we waited and signed that in three weeks, probably we'd be okay.
They would prefer to get that check out this year.
Yeah, they're kind of need it by the end of, by the end of the calendar year.
Yes.
Is it specifically that sign?
That's the sign that we put in the grant, that's the picture that we sent, the information, and so forth. We had looked at the lettering on the building, says, "Like Kitty Winfield," so a little time. I think that around 1,300 was the estimate on the material for new lettering. So I don't know if we went with lettering instead of that sign, if that's allowable under grant guidelines, since it would be a different sign. Or if there's another sign in town. That'd be a power company regulation, I guess, decision.
We'll, we'll kind of try to have something that's down more than ever on the next council meeting. Unless y'all got any more questions for me. Thanks, sir. Next item on the agenda is bid for the garbage truck loan. You know, we agreed to purchase that garbage truck, so we actually submitted, sent out for bids to the same ones we always do. We've actually got some bids this time. First State Bank, State Bank Trust, Assistant Bank. We always send, this is what we send to them. Everybody gets the same bid format that we want to put in. Some first things going, it's going to be First State Bank outside. The amount that we requested a bid on is an amount of $180,000 to purchase the garbage truck. Their offer is a rate of 2.29% with no fees. That's for First State Bank. It's 84 months alone. At 2.9, 2.29, 2.29 for $180,000. Next one's going to be State Bank Trust. It's got on its own bid format, it's up $180,000 for 84 months. No bank fees, interest rate of 2.97. 2.97 for 84 months on $180,000. The next one's on the, for Assistant Bank of Winfield, $180,000 for 84 months. Bank fee is $350, interest rate's 3.25, 3.25. When is this truck supposed to be bidding? When's this truck supposed to be bidding?
They told him sometime November. I don't know if he's heard any different.
We haven't been called to pick it up yet.
No, we're not, my apologies.
He's from Winfield. He lives in Winfield, he wants to stay in Winfield. You know, we always, always talk about how this community supports each other. And I like seeing young men that want to stay in Winfield and have a career in Winfield. He may change his mind, he may be too young to really know what he wants to do, but his goal is right now, if that's what he wants to do. I appreciate the council giving him the opportunity to do that and be trained by our department to what we want them and how somebody else is trying. What Brett has said, that we have, y'all have experienced since y'all been here, but I have experienced numerous times over the last nine years that I've been here, of hiring a seasoned officer from somewhere else, it's not exactly what, it's not exactly a fit for what we are trying to do here in our department, what Brett's trying to do. It's a lot easier to train somebody that's never been trained than somebody that's already been trained in certain ways. And I'm going to make that quick. And I appreciate you showing an interest in Winfield, in the state of Winfield, and she'll build a probationary period. If you don't do, during that probation period, if anything's not right, he will not hesitate to tell you that it's not going to work. So I, you know, I encourage you to keep your head on straight. Follow his direction and I think you got it. For six months, you have to carry one bullet in your shirt pocket.
Did your mama daddy know about this?
I guess I'm going to ask, I did ask Hall and Frymore already?
Uh, ma'am, you haven't asked that.
You got the motions, I think. Hall and Frymore, we appreciate that.
We appreciate it, but...
Yeah. Let's see what else can we put down with this right here. I'm going to need to rock the buck, huh? Yeah. If nobody else has got any other business, I think I've got all mine that I had on there taken care of. Maybe I always probably, you can go through and remember, but I don't have anything else. If not, I'm going to need to go to the next item on the agenda, the council play, what I need to ask for motion, if I have to ask that question about it. Hall and Frymore. I'm going to need to ask the council to, let's go into what story to take a session, discuss possible litigation. We won't be taking any action when we come back in. So that'll be all of the council meeting for tonight, so I need to ask the council. Hall and Frymore, thank y'all for attending.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if, if one of us have a question about something that occurred, how do we get that address or answer the question? Do I write it in and send it to one that you own, or how do I get that question answered?
If you want to address the council, if you want to bring it up like some of these others have, just let Angie know at City Hall here that you, what your concern is.
Okay.
She'll get with me or my one that'll get with me and then we'll, if I can't, if me and you, if I can't answer or help you, we'll put you on the agenda and let you bring it forward to council.
Okay, thanks.
Y'all go ahead and enjoy yourselves, we'll be out by...